All right. Welcome, July 25th, 2024 Lowell School Committee Meeting. Please salute the flag.
Pledge lemons to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, limited, and justice for all.
Mayor Clark, please call the roll.
Mr. Bahu?
Here.
Mr. Conway?
Yeah.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Here.
Ms. Doherty? Mr. Lay?
Yeah.
Ms. Martin?
She's muted.
Ms. Martin?
I'm here. The host muted me, but yes, I'm here.
Mayor Ruck?
Here.
Six present, one absent.
All right, thank you. First, Special Order of Business. We're very happy, honored, and privileged tonight to do a spotlight on excellence for the Lowell Youth Leadership Program this summer of 2024. I'm going to pass it to Mr. Lay for a couple of comments first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank Levi and is it Andre for being here. Lowell Youth Program took place in, at the Greater Lowell Technical School this summer, and I don't want to take your, the words away, but you know how, how good the program is and, and what is important of the program. And I've seen so many students from Lowell ended up going, joined this program, and they have a good time, and also they learn to be the leader of our city in the future. So I just want to thank you for taking the time here in the summer to, to tell us about your program. If you want to take a couple moments and go to the microphone, Lowell's yours.
Can you hear me? Oh, good. Is this on?
No, I don't think so.
Oh, Jesus. I feel like...
Yeah.
Can we get a deeper voice?
Yeah.
All right, yeah.
Want to take this now or?
No, I think, as long as you can hear me.
Yeah, we got it.
All right, awesome. So my name's Andres Lopez, and I am the Program Director of L Y L P, or Lowell Youth Leadership Program. So I'll give a little brief history, and then I got some testimonials, and then I'll connect into like why we're here. So, you hear me?
There is no amplification in this room. This is only for the TV.
Oh.
All good? All right, thank you.
Oh, good. All right. Oh, I got you. Got you.
All right, yeah.
So Lowell Youth Leadership Program was actually established in sort of to replicate a program that we, the co-founders, kind of went to. It was M Y S P. And so we, we went to this program. It was all free, and if you're from the inner city, you understand that the struggles of just trying to do something for the summer, something that's affordable when, you know, you come from poverty, and a lot of us did. And so about, you know, 20 years, 20 years later, the program got defunded. And so we all got back together, and we kind of talked. We said we want to do something for our community, and we want to do something that kind of impact us. And we all connected with our old program director, and we said, let's create something for the kids that's better, but it's also free at no cost, so that there's no barriers that can sort of hold kids from getting access to these vital experiences, such as, you know, like swimming, or financial literacy, or, you know, healthy masculinity, all free at no cost. And so we, we got together, and it occurred. It happened. We got funded, and we are in our third year. We went from 70 campers to 160. The really coolest part about it was that we show over 35 different activities, and a lot of my campers here are going to talk to you about it. And it's all free. And even that was better than what we had when we were growing up, was all our lunches were provided from local restaurants, all of them. So Drake House of Pizza, Panella, Atresca, and they're donating 200 lunches. And we believe at L Y L P that, you know, you can be free and still have high-quality product. And as you see, we hold expectation for the kids about being on time, wearing their shirt, participating, even if it feels uncomfortable, right? That's what it takes to be a leader. And we're currently working now with our J C's or junior counselors on getting a credit course that's, you know, what is, what does it take to be a leader? So I won't say much because I know I can talk a lot, but I got a few sort of campers that got their experiences, I think will resonate a little bit more with you guys. So can I have the first person? Mariani?
Hello, my name is Mariani Wilson, and next to me is my mother, Melonzo Wilson. We are both sophomores who attend Lowell High School and come here to tell you guys about our experience and want the Lowell Youth Leadership Program to continue from the very first day you get there. Coming up from first day you get, coming off the bus, being welcome and felt comfortable with people I didn't know, I learned so many skills that could have helped me in big situations, such as right now, I couldn't imagine myself speaking in front of a whole bunch of people, but look at me now. And this was only because of the classes of L Y L P are provided for us campers. There was never a moment in this camp where I felt unsupported or alone. The camps helped me and the others to come out of our shells and be comfortable with young people. The first year of L Y L P, my brother Melonzo didn't know how to swim, nor didn't want to participate in swimming. As two years went by, my brother Melonzo got more comfortable and allowed himself to try every year in the beginning of the camp. We take swimming tests, which was to tread water drunk and swim back and forth. The first test we did, Melonzo passed two of them, but not all three. The only question was try harder, and the best, in the last few days of camp, we did a progress to see how much we progressed. So you see, and he passed all three. As you see, L Y L P hopes you grow as a person. I only, never seen a camp where everyone's enjoying themselves and never put up the phone once, only to capture the memories.
Hi, I'm Jayloni Spilles-Pagan. I also, I attend Greater Lowell Tech. This is my third year at L Y L P. This was definitely an experience, and it was really fun as the years went by, just to see new people, new kids grow, have new cultures around me, different personalities. My experience here was something most kids don't get to experience. It was free and also very, very fun. It was fun to see other ages around me just have the things that I also have, like they get to learn substance use and, you know, saving up money. John Dark or Credit Union came to help us and learn about, you know, saving and how to make a bank account. This camp is really for kids to grow their minds and get out their shells, and it was fun to obviously see kids try new things, things I probably wouldn't be like doing if I didn't know this camp existed. But Lowell Youth Leadership Program definitely defines us as people, and it's great, it's a great program to have, and definitely, hopefully, it goes throughout the years, and it's a nice program.
Hello, everyone. My name's Gianna Lopez. I'm a sophomore at Greater Lowell Tech. As some may know, the daughter of the Director of the Program, Andres Lopez. Going into the first year of the Lowell Youth Leadership Program was nerve-wracking, but yet quickly felt so comfortable. The environment, no, the people, the environment and the space just felt right. L Y L P taught me to step out my comfort zone and become a leader to not just myself, but to everyone around me, which was the reason I went back every year. The camp environment was incredibly supportive, making it easier for us campers to connect with others and grow as a person. The experiences I had, they were life-changing and helped me develop skills that I use every day. This program is for building personal growth and leadership in young people like me, and it should definitely continue to benefit future campers. L Y L P provided me with unforgettable experience in big life schools. It's a program that truly makes a difference and allows you to be yourself and have fun. Lowell Youth Leadership Program deserves to continue for the benefit of future generations. Thank you.
So like I said, those are my, my campers that have been there three years, and I just want to put it out there before I finish is, they have to wake up at like 6 o'clock, wait at the bus stop at 6:45, and then get there till 1 or 2 o'clock to get home. And this is, you know, for a whole month, four weeks, and obviously, if you're an educator like myself, you understand that teenage girls really don't want to wake up or swim or, you know, and we had, you know, over, I think it was 70% that all attended the whole camp. That's a lot, right? That means kids care, and they're engaged, and obviously, you know, secondary is like the phones, they're not using their phones, and that's sort of like the expectation. We're here, we're going to participate, we're going to be in the moment. And so we stand here because we would love to partner up, you know, maybe in the future, with Lowell Public Schools is dear to my heart, with Lowell, like you said, I teach at the Robinson, and to see our kids excel and excel and hopefully become school committee members or community leaders like myself, or even city councilmen. So thank you again for this time. We really appreciate it.
Mr. Bahu?
A number of years ago, I got a phone call from Mrs. McCusker and Mr. Scollin, and they asked if they could use the facility. I'm on the school committee at Greater Lowell Tech. They asked if they could use the facility at Greater Lowell Tech, and the first thing I did was call the superintendent. So I, I know that Ms. McCusker, Mr. Scollin worked very hard to run this program through fundraisers at UTEC, private money that they're asking people to attend their functions. I know that they have the, the state, they're getting grants from the state, they're getting grants from the city, and I know they work really hard to go ahead and create this program. I know this program was, was, was in effect about 20 years ago, and all the work that went in, it sounds like you, young man, or sir, was a member of that program, and you wanted to bring it back. I, I know how it's grown. It's grown from about 70 students to about 170 students today. They never knew how they were going to go ahead and get the funding for it. They never knew if they were going to be able to come back to Greater Lowell Tech because of the space constraints, because of renovations that they're having at Greater Lowell Tech. I know that Ms. Davis really ran hard with this thing to make sure that it worked. I also know that your students grow exponentially just by being a part of this program, and it's helping them go ahead and feel confident, and it's helping them grow as members. So as a member of Greater Lowell Tech, as a, as a member of Lowell School Committee, I would love the benefit to be able to partner with you guys and watch you grow even to a larger scale because of all the benefits that you offer to our students. You know, I know we had a lot of great speakers there. I know Mr. State Representative Vanna Howard was there. I know the Head of Education, Mr. Tutwiler was there, the Head of Massachusetts Education. I know Julie Chen, the Chancellor of UMass Lowell was there. I mean, this is such a wonderful opportunity for every one of your students, for every one of you, and I thank you for all the efforts you put to go ahead and give this free camp the benefits for all of the students we have.
Mr. Del Rossi?
I just want to thank you both, Mr. Levi and Mr. Cruz, from the bottom of my heart for all that you do. I know, Mr. Cruz, you're out there coaching, tracking the fall, and making those connections with those kids constantly, which means so much. You guys are two of my son's favorite teachers of the Robinson, just because you see him for who he is, and that he loves that, and I think that is what gives our kids that extra push, when they feel that special connection, and then you're doing more in the summer to, to see these kids grow because of an experience you had when you were younger, and now you want to bring it forward, and paying it forward is beautiful. So anything we can do to help, please keep us in the loop and let us know.
Mr. Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say just very quickly, congratulations, and, and thank you for the hard work and the commitment. You know, the summertime is, is a, is a difficult time, and when you were saying about what time they start in the morning, waking people up at that, I have two daughters, it was very dangerous sometime waking them up, believe me. So again, I congratulate the commitment of, of you guys that are putting this program together, and also the students that are willing to do something extra, and that's very unique. That's different, and it's, it's something that, you know, this, this is a growing situation, and it's something that as they get older, they will be, again, taking on more responsibility, and this is, this is a great foundation. Thank you guys very much for that.
Excellent. I'll just, I'll finish. Andres and Levi, obviously knowing you guys personally a little bit, you are leaders of the city, and you're transferring that, you're passing that down to, to our students to become where you people are, right? Leaders in Lowell, and very appreciative of the work that you do, the volunteer activities and teaching the, the kids of, you know, how to be, right? And very fortunate to have you involved in, in the program. Mr. Superintendent, hopefully we can find some more ways to partner with them going forward. You know, they have more than doubled their enrollment in a very short period of time, and that's a credit to the program itself. It's not just all fun and games, right? It's some responsibility, some accountability that's taught as well. So anything that we can do, as Mr. Del Rossi said, to, to help improve the program, maybe not to make it longer, I know four weeks is a lot in the summertime, but again, hopefully we can be here to, to partner in the future. So thank you once again. Thank you to the, to the kids for being here as well, to, to expound on what you do do for the city and for the kids. So thank you very much.
Just want to, just want to say, just want to say that also I want to thank co-director Lisa and Sarah as well. Thank you.
You're more than welcome to stay for the next three hours for the meeting. You want, right? I wish I had the excuse too. All right, yeah.
Thanks again, guys.
Take care. All right. Mr. Lay, thank you very much. Moving on, section, section four minutes, the motion to approve revised minutes of the October 18th, 2024 school, 2023? 2023 School Committee Meeting and a special and regularly scheduled meeting minutes of the Lowell School Committee on June 12th, 2024, July 8th, 2024, and place them on file by Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. Del Rossi. All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion passes. Five, permission to enter, 5.1. Permission to enter July 25th, 2024. The motion to approve the permission to enter by, yeah, Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Lay. Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a quick question, and actually maybe a point of clarification. Under the Mass Association of School Committees, we are recommending, you'll see later in the meeting, that we go enter a contract with them about reviewing our policies. The total fee would be $10,500, but it to be billed over three years, so this year would be $3,500. So I, I'm thinking we want to change that amount for tonight's vote, because it's only for $3,500, not the $10,000.
Mr. Phil?
I don't mind either way. I think you're, from the M A S C point of view, you're, you're committing to a process, it's a three-year process, but you're committing to a process that costs $10,500, and so they want you to vote to commit to that. That's my understanding. I don't, I don't mind parsing it out over three years.
That's, so as long as you understand the only amount that would be for fiscal year '25 is the $3,500. Okay, then I'm good with it. Thank you.
Motion was made, seconded. Roll call.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Ruck?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
5.2, approval of amended contract for Assistant Superintendent and academic of, I'm sorry, instruction of Nada Fox Roy. The motion to amend the contract for Assistant Superintendent by Mr. Conway, seconded by Mr. Lay. Roll call.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Ruck?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
5.3, approval of amended contract for Assistant Superintendent for School Leadership, Wendy Cracker Robert. The motion to approve the amended contract by Mr. Del Rossi, seconded by Mr. Bahu. Roll call.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Ruck?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
5.4, approval of amended contract for Assistant Superintendent for School Student Support Services, Alice Brown Legrand. The motion to approve the amended contract by Mr. Del Rossi, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Roll call.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Ruck?
Yes.
Seven yeas approved.
Moving on to motions, 6.1 by Ms. Martin, request a report from the administration on the proposed changes to the LeBlanc therapeutic day school for the 2024, 2025 school year, seconded by Mr. Del Rossi. Ms. Martin?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Really just looking for an update on this situation. I know we had had a conversation at a previous meeting regarding the status of moving additional students there and making some other changes, so haven't heard anything. I was hoping we could get an update on exactly what that status is before we get to September and it's, you know, things are being implemented. Thank you.
Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. Thank you, Ms. Martin. So there is an update, and if it works, if it suits you and the committee members, I'll give a verbal update right now. We are no longer pursuing any changes to the Laurel Lee School, excuse me, to the LeBlanc School for next school year. That was in consideration because of overcrowding at the 80-day school, and you may recall, we were considering using one of the floors at the LeBlanc School for some of the 80 students. That's no longer in consideration. In place of that, we are trying to work on using some of the space that we've acquired at John Dark. So although it's not John Dark School itself, which will take some preparation over the next couple of years, construction projects to get it ready as to be a school, we are pursuing use of the Convent area that seems to be very suitable. We are in the process of, of working on getting that ready. We've had the fire marshal look at it, we've had the city building inspector look at it, all of which seems to be going very well. There are other considerations in that process, such as, you know, electrical, Wi-Fi. We need to have internet access at that school. That's proving to be quite gnarly a problem, and so we're working through those at this moment, but again, in direct response to the motion, we are not considering any changes to the LeBlanc programming for next year.
That will certainly suffice as a report. Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion passes. 6.2 by Mr. Lay, request the superintendent to explore possibilities of teaching history of Lowell and middle schools, seconded by Mr. Conway, Mr. Lay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm seeking the support from my college school committee on this motion. I, I understand that this, this is going to be a brand-new program, and at the same time, we also have a brand-new Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum. So this is, reminds me of the last time, a few years ago, when I submitted a motion to have Lowell High students the opportunity to take vocational classes at the Greater Lowell Tech, and Ms. Robin Desmond took that program, and she quickly was able to put together and call it the After Dark Program, and, and I think that program became popular and is, is well-received. So I hope that this new program that we have for our middle school students are going to be well-received, and I, I know that we have a lot of people still exist in Lowell who knows about Lowell history, and Jim Peters, Dick Howell, Cliff Krieger, just to name, to name a few, who love to talk about Lowell history, and I know there would be a few more who could have great input. So if we could just bring those people together and put together a, a, a nice package for our students to, to study, I, I think that would be, that would be great, and I think also maybe given us Lowell a, a reason to come together, unite, and put some input and, and help our students. So if you don't mind, Mr. Mayor, I, I'd like to ask if we could have a roll call on, on this motion.
Can anybody else speak first?
Sure, yes.
Thank you. Mr. Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wholeheartedly support this. I will tell you that when I first started teaching quite a few years ago, the, we had all the ninth grade up at AFCO, I think there were 1,200 ninth graders in one building, which was quite an experience in itself, and the housemaster at that time was a Mr. Finn, and he called me down to his office, and he said, I wonder if you could help me out with something. I'd like to develop a course in the history of Lowell, and he said, I wonder if you could, if you could put it together, which I did. I was very proud to put that together, and I taught that for a couple of years, and then it passed on to the, and to the high school with Charlie Hill and, and, and a number of other people. So again, I think the kids really appreciated it, they liked it, they, they saw, here, here's an environment that they live in, and it was a great idea by, by Mr. Finn at the time, so that these kids could now relate to, whether it was a monument, or a street, or a sign, or whatever it may be, and the history behind it. And one of the places that we brought them down, I was very proud to bring them into a place like this, and the kids were in complete awe when they went into the chambers. And I remember the mayor at the time came out and gave them a, a talking to, and it really, I think it sparked, it sparked something. So again, I, I congratulate Mr. Lay in, in bringing this motion forward. Thank you.
Roll call, Mayor Clark?
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Del Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Ruck?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
6.3 by Mr. Lay, request Aramak to provide a list of goals or plan that will improve food services provided to schools for the FY 24, '25 school year and remaining term of the contract, seconded by Mr. Bahu. Just like you asked, Mr. Lay, didn't we already file this motion a couple of weeks ago, a couple of means ago?
I talked about it when...
Yes, I see you do it.
Yes, yes. Now, now, I have a...
Great motion. Go right ahead. Yes, sir. All right, yeah.
Thank you. So first, first I'd like to say that Lisa Kent at, from Aramak is very nice, and she has always been giving school committee good meals whenever needed, but, you know, now, now it's a new year and a, and a new contract time also, and this motion is not meant to put a negativity on Aramak or, or anything, or anyway like that. But I'd like to ask Aramak if we could to do better on the food services. If kids are not eating the food, that means the money that we spend on it is a waste. And, and, and if the food given is not the type of food that you want to serve to your daughter or your son, then it should not be served to the general students. So, so if, if there is any way that Aramak could put together a, a program, a plan, or, or anything forward that, to make our students happy when they receive the meal, that's, that's the purpose. So I, I hope that this motion passed. Thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Oppose, motion passes. 6.4, Mr. Lay, request superintendent to schedule a tour of the former Jean Doc Building for the school committee, seconded by Mr. Bahu, Mr. Lay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since the purchase of the, the new building, Jean Doc, I don't think any one of us have seen the inside of it. Eventually, hopefully, it will become a, a school sometimes, so at least we, it would be a good opportunity for, for us to walk in and, and see what it is now in, in, in the current condition. And I understand, Mr. Bahu, you want to put in an amendment?
Sure. So this seems to be a great idea. We just spent a few million dollars to see what we purchased would be wonderful. I also noticed that the freshman academy is just near completion, and I know it will be occupied by our students this upcoming year, so I'm hoping that we could go ahead and amend the motion to include a tour of the freshman academy before it opens up, so that we can feel the progress of the, the building project that we've been hearing and talking about.
You want to take 612 now too, Mr. Bahu, while we're talking about it? By Mr. Bahu, take six... Yeah, we'll do six and do 612 together.
Sure.
By Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. Del Rossi, 612, have the superintendent look at the feasibility of utilizing some of the classrooms at the St. Jean Doc School that was recently purchased for the upcoming school year to offset some of the overcrowding and our costs the Lowell Public Schools pay to rent other sites. Public Schools paid to rent other sites.
Sure. And this sounds like it was just addressed by the superintendent a moment ago, with the LeBlanc School being overcrowded, and we may use some of the convent space to use, to utilize benefits of having students use the St. Jean Dark School. So, can I ask you a question? I'll ask you a question directly before I maybe ask for the motion to pass. Of the amount of students at the 80 School in Chemsford, would this offset all of what we're utilizing the 80 School for in Chemsford, or would we still be possibly using their facility for a period of time?
Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Bahu. In, in answering the question, I might add that I think both the motions that we're talking about are worthy motions, and I would encourage the committee to, to seek a response or a report from the superintendent at our next meeting or as soon as the opportunity on both of them. Because I think, I've indicated we are hoping to use some space at the Jean Dark for the overflow at the 80 School. But that's in the works right now, and I think it'd be worth giving you an update at, at next meeting or as soon as we can. So, I welcome both motions. As far as the, all of the students at the 80 School, I can say, yes, eventually, there would be sufficient space at Jean Dark for all of that program. I don't believe that Jean Dark will be ready until another two years. Significant construction work, including possibly adding an elevator, will, will take that amount of time. And so, in that time, in the next two years, who knows what other space needs we may come up with? Who knows what other ideas this committee or central office figures might have for use of space? But the general, in, in, so in other words, I don't want today to commit to saying the 80 will automatically move to Jean Dark. But, but that's certainly a possibility. And it would be a practical, one where there would be sufficient space, yes.
Okay. So, a report would be something we would all appreciate.
All in favor of motion 6.4 and 612 say aye.
Aye.
Pass this 6.5. Mr. Conway, request superintendent to update report on cellphone policies at all high schools. I want you to include all aspects of the policy, examples of effectiveness, change in our compliance footprint for the upcoming school year, and other pertinent information, seconded by Mr. Rossi, Mr. Conway.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, in the packet this week, we have the, the student handbook, both in the high school and in the middle school. And I certainly appreciate that. I'd like to see a report, Mr. Superintendent, on the raw material, the raw data, shall we say, of non-compliance with the students and also staff. Because I have been contacted by a number of sources that are telling me that some of the staff, now, what does some mean? I don't know. But some of the staff are not following or implementing the policy. And if this is the case, we can't have that happen, because they should be the role models for this program. And how do you expect the students to follow and do a, you know, abide by the phone policy? And yet, staff members don't abide by it. So, we have to all be on the same, we have to be on the same page. And I certainly look forward to that, that information. And one other thing, too. It was always a big thing, I remember being in the high school, we had to deal with the student handbook. And we would collectively, we'd have all the housemasters, I think they're called deans, it's been changed half a dozen times over the years. But the housemasters would sit down, and we would go over this student handbook. And we would make potential changes to it, and to make sure that everything was up to date. However, before it went to press, we would bring in a city solicitor and take a look at that. Take a look at the potential changes that we made, and ask for opinions on, should something be added to it, or deleted, or changed, because laws can change. And I will tell you, one of the, one of the major problems that we ran into is when we had a discipline, usually a discipline issue. And when we had that issue, all of a sudden, you've got a parent that goes over that student handbook, word for word, and says, "I don't see it in this student handbook," or "That's not what the student, that's not what the handbook says." So, I think it's important that we bring that, a city solicitor, assistant city solicitor, as the last step. It's like the ninth inning, to make sure that, that is, is fair to everyone, it has included everything that we need to have done. So, again, I look forward to that report. All right?
Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Conway will be happy to respond to the, the motion in a detailed way. I think it might be worth interjecting a couple of points that the committee may not know about. One is that the policy changes are vetted at the high school through a series of staff forums. There is the ninth inning review that Mr. Conway is asking for, but, but we have two staff council at central office. They're two attorneys. They're, they're under Students Board Services now, right? And so, they do vet, legally vet the, the handbook, and, and only then is it put forward to the committee to consider. Thank you.
All in favor say aye. opposed motion passes 6.6. Mr. Conway, request superintendent to give an update on new and expanded partnerships with UMass Lowell and Middlesex Community College, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Mr. Conway, is this a refile of the same motion you filed a couple of meetings ago?
Yeah, but I want an update on that, and I want to add something to it also.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Because I, I think that, Mr. Mayor, partnerships is something that's extremely important to us. It certainly helps us in so many different ways. And when I take a look at the institutions, in particular, UMass and Middlesex Community College, they have been extremely supportive of us. And I think it's important that, I would assume, Mr. Skinner, that we are meeting with Middlesex and with the university all the time. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And have we come up with some new, new types of partnerships at all?
We have. So, I'm happy to talk right now, but, but I've been encouraged not to-
Encouraged not to what?
To talk right now. If the members wish me to give a verbal report, I'm happy to do that.
Right.
I can put together a much more thorough report. It's, it's that your, your motion-
And do you think it would make sense if we had, if we had somebody from Middlesex and had somebody from the university? There has to be some point people. Because when we did this before with partnerships, because I was the liaison to Middlesex and also to the university. For example, at Middlesex, it was Molly Sheehy, Dr. Sheehy. It was Dr. Lenehan and Marissa Munia. And it was Dr. Wooding up at the university. We met quite often, and they came, and they gave a presentation of what was going on and how, and how they were, you know, again, a partnership, by the way. I think that one thing we have to be careful with, when we talk about partnerships, it's almost like we're the ones looking for the partners, partners. And I understand that. But I think in a partnership, it's not just a one-way street. It's got to be a two-way street. So, how do we help out the, the university? How do we help out Middlesex Community College with the partnerships? And one of the, just a very quick example, and I know I've mentioned it before, but when we had MCC at Lowell High School. Because what we did is we found out that on both sides of institutions, Middlesex and the university, excuse me, and Lowell, and Lowell High School, our attendance was going down, our college admissions were going down. And it just so happened, at Middlesex Community College, their acceptance were going down too. So, what, that's where we joined, and it became the two-way street. And the partnerships, and we worked on those, and it actually, it was beneficial for both institutions. So, again, these are very important. I think you're going to hear this a number of times in, in the next year or two years, because we want to have, we want to have the best. We want to make sure that our partners were working well with them. All right?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, I think it's a terrific motion. I'm delighted with it. And I'd be delighted to show off the work that we're doing, particularly in the spirit that Mr. Conway talks about in terms of being a true partnership. We have ongoing partnerships. We meet frequently with both Middlesex and the university. There's a terrific amount of work going on. I think if we've given the opportunity to report out, you'll be quite pleased. I like the idea, by the way, of having representatives of those two organizations be here. We'll try to arrange that when we're reporting out.
That would be a good idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor say aye. opposed motion passes 6.7. Mr. Conway, request superintendent to give an update on identifying outside security company for the purpose of conducting a total safety and security assessment of the Lowell Public School system.
Yeah, thank you.
Seconded by-
I'm sorry.
Mr. Bahu, Mr. Conway.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is something that I've been waiting for a, a report on this. I put this on three, three months ago. Have we got a company, an outside company that's going to do an audit of our, of all, all our schools?
If I may, please-
Yeah, I thought we voted this motion down last time when it came before us.
I don't, I don't think so.
Okay.
At any rate, there's, there's ongoing work in this area. And I think if this motion passes, and if the other one passes, it deserves, it would warrant a proper response, a written response. We should provide that. I'll work to provide that at the next meeting. In the meantime, as an update, since, you know, for, for Mr. Conway and the other committee members, Dr. Hall can indicate what some of the progress has been to date.
Yeah, and I'll just say, I, I know for a fact, last time this came up, we did not authorize you to hire outside company or to go look for outside company. We wanted Lowell police to be involved, to talk about what they do. But I know for sure, we did not-
Right, correct.
Right. Outside company was not, was not part of the, you know.
Some of the work that's been going on involves our work with Lowell Police to, to, to figure out what our needs are. It still warrants a response, as Mr. Conway's seeking, and I think we should provide that.
Well, I think that, you know, we, we ought to revisit it. I think we really should. Because the fact is, you know, there's, I've worked very close with the police department. They've done a wonderful job. Nobody is saying that they're not doing a good job. But it's what they call subject matter experts that are brought in, just like we do in education, just like the business world does, the medical world, and certainly for safety. And it's subject matter experts, these are the individuals that work on this day in and day out. I mean, we have, as I said it before, we have over 15,000 students. We have over 3,300 employees. And they deserve to have a safe environment in that building and outside the building. And as far as I'm concerned, I'm going to keep on hopping on this, is I want to make sure that this environment is as safe as we possibly can. And if I end up upsetting some people, I'm terribly sorry. But as far as I'm concerned, I'm worried about the security. A lot of things have come up, and I think it's pretty evident that we could learn from an expert company coming in and giving us the best ideas. And again, it has nothing to do with the fact that what is being done by our police force is a wonderful job. We get it. But you know what? Our teachers, our administrators do a wonderful job. And what do we do? We bring in, we bring in experts, Mr. Skinner. We bring in experts, don't we? To come up with new ideas and best practices? Well, then, we should do it with security. Thank you.
Yeah. I just take offense with the statement that our students and our teachers are not safe right now, and the need to do something like this in order to ensure their safety. I believe that they are safe in, in our school system. And anything to otherwise, I think, is detrimental to the Lowell Public School program. But if you want to just give us what would cost maybe to, but I would not approve this, to go out and find a company right now without knowing what, we go into it, what the cost may be, as long as we do it the right way. If we are going to vote to do it, you know, we, we do it the proper public manner of going out to find bids and so forth.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I may say so, I think Mr. Conway's motions and his concerns are worthy of a proper formal response. We'll work to provide that response to the committee for your next meeting. And from there, the committee can choose to, to seek additional remedies or additional information.
If anything, I think this would be a good thing, that people would want to support it, whether it was the school department, the city side, administrators, and so forth. Why wouldn't you want to support it? So, anyways, I think with the day that we think that we're safe enough, that's when we have a problem. And as far as I'm concerned, we need to be proactive. So, we're going to have to disagree with that, but I'm, I'm going to still keep on fighting with it.
All in favor say aye. opposed motion passes 6.8. Mr. Conway, request superintendent give disciplinary action update on the recent alleged assault and battery with a 16-year-old sophomore and her father near Lowell High School at dismissal, as reported by Boston 25 News. Is there a second? Mr. Rossi, Mr. Conway?
Yes, and I did talk about this before, too. But I want to say that when I take a look, and if you saw that video, and what the father said, it was absolutely incredible. It was scary. It was very scary. When we take a look at, on the police report, that they were punched, kicked repeatedly, then dragged and stomped on. And these were students from Lowell High, right across the street from Lowell High School at dismissal. And the father said, which is very important, the father said that the daughter had been taunted most of the school year. So, the seeds of this was in the school, which makes us responsible for the situation. Now, I will tell you, I know what some people are going to say, "That's off-school property. That's not us. We're not responsible." Now, you, Mr. Skinner, you obviously was a principal. You were a principal. And I'm sure that you're familiar with the case of Nicholas B. versus the school committee of Worcester. And that's Massachusetts Law, Chapter 76, Section 16 and 17. Let me just read it very quickly. The court upheld the actions of Worcester School Committee in that when a student involved in an incident after school, off of school grounds that was planned in school, the student or students are still subject to school discipline. The court ruled that the student knew this violent conduct was seriously wrong and contrary to school policy, even though the code of discipline did not address the conduct of school grounds. I'm sure you're familiar with that. So, I think that in the seriousness of this situation, you know, were these students expelled?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Superintendent. Right. Can't talk, can't talk about this.
I understand. I can say some things. First of all, I can acknowledge what Mr. Conway said, and, and he's right. And so, I am, am familiar with the, the legal case he refers to. And as a school principal, I use that finding, and others like it, because there are many others like it, about issues that occur at a bus stop, issues that occur on a bus, even something that happened online on a Saturday night in a kid's bedroom. We took wide liberty to protect students at my school regardless of where the, the seeds of the incident occurred. If it, if it related to students in the school, we took action. That is also, that is also what has occurred in this case that Mr. Conway's referring to. And I, I can, I cannot say very much about it. I've actually asked the city solicitor how much I could reveal. But I can, I can say this much. There was a thorough follow-up from Lowell High School, and students were seriously consequence for their actions where that was appropriate. That did occur. I, I'm not at liberty to talk about individual students, nor individual actions. I can say, to my satisfaction, it has been followed through on, and students that were culpable faced significant discipline that has been meted out, and, and there have been serious consequences. I don't think I can say any more than that, but that's as much as I can say.
Well, I, I think I, I bring this out to let, to let people know that what's extremely important as a parent, I'd like to know that what did we put into place to make sure that this didn't happen again? That's, that is, is really the key. We can't change what took place. But, in a- a situation like this, and you were administrator in a school, I was an administrator in a school, you can bet your life that we were sitting down and we were talking with students, usually by groups of grades. And what we would do is we would have social workers there. We'd have, we'd have the police there. We would have individuals that would be supportive to make sure that this was not going to happen, and it wasn't going to spread. I mean, that's very simple. I mean, that's kind of like administration 101 to do that. I want to know, was that done? And there's nothing wrong with, there's nothing wrong with asking, that's not a secret, to say, yeah, we met, each dean met with their freshman class, and they said, look, if you have a problem, whatever it is, this is how you're going to do it. You should have your guidance counselors there and so forth. And it's not like you do it day after day after day. But the fact is, the parents and the kids want to know that they're going to be as safe as possible.
If it suits the committee, I'm happy to give additional.
All the favors say aye. Oppose. Motion passes six point nine. I hope Mr. Superintendent has the same legal advice on this motion as well. By Mr. Conway, request superintendent give a report on a Lowell High School student that was arrested for possession of a firearm at the close of school in the week of June 10, 2024. Second? Seconded by Mr. Lay, Mr. Conway.
Yeah, thank you. Here is another situation that's right after school, and, Mr. Superintendent, there were, I believe there was a student that was arrested. Is that right, Lowell High School?
I'm not at liberty to talk about what happened. It's a criminal matter that occurred after school. It's been dealt with as appropriately as I believe it can be, but I'm not able to comment on it any further.
So you can't tell, you can't, you can't let us know that there was some type of, there was severe disciplinary action taken with that student?
I can tell you that I discussed it with the police, and the police told me that it should be considered in their jurisdiction and that it is a police matter.
But it's not our matter?
Only if the student.
Let me ask you.
Mr. Conway, I mean, we've told you a hundred, excuse me, we mentioned multiple times already about personal matters, including students. Solicitor has given advice to the superintendent. He has passed that along to you.
All right. I want to ask one other question, Mr. Superintendent. In a situation like this, I don't care who his name is and so forth. Let's put that aside for a second. It was, it was, it has been reported that he wasn't in school that particular day. So therefore, a gun, a firearm. Now, in a situation like that, what would you do? Would you, would, if I was in that situation, I'll tell you how we would handle it. We would go around to all the teachers to find out if that student was in any of the classes, because, Mr. Superintendent, just because someone is marked absent doesn't necessarily mean that they didn't go to school. That's, I think, is extremely important.
Understood. So can I say one thing on behalf of Lowell High School, on behalf of our schools? Lowell High School is as safe a school as it's ever been. You have in your packet, by the way, I don't know that, I'm not able to cite this offhand right now, but there are, there's lots of data existing on discipline issues at Lowell High School, and they have been continuously improving in recent years. So Lowell High School is a very safe school. I invite you to visit it with me. But it is also true, and Mr. Conway is referring to actual instances that occurred, and while I'm not at liberty to give a great deal of detail, they have been dealt with thoroughly. If a student is a danger to the school, if the student's considered to be a danger with weapons and so on, they can be prevented from ever returning to the school, right? So I'm just telling you, it's been dealt with thoroughly, and Lowell High School is a very safe school. I'm not at liberty to give you detailed information.
Mr. Superintendent, I'm not saying it's not a safe school, but the fact is that we should always be striving to make it safer.
Correct.
Thank you, Mr..
Okay. Six ten by Ms. Doherty. Request superintendent provide a plan for Lowell High School to collaborate with the Greater Lowell Technical High School, regarding their Lowell students who participated in our middle school band/Color Guard program, being able to participate in those programs at Lowell High School, to plan to address guardrails that may be required to make the collaboration sustainable, such as transportation and/or fees. Seconded by Mr. Lay, Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have a speaker? Oh, yes, let the speaker.
Carrie Russo. Please state your name and address.
Hello, my name is Kristen Crady. I live at Four Spruce Street in Townsend, Massachusetts.
Sorry, that was for Carrie Russo first.
Oh, Carrie Russo.
No, no, you can go. I just.
I'm sorry.
You dropped the gun. Go ahead, go ahead.
Okay, I'm Kristen Crady. I'm the director of the Color Guard programs here in Lowell. In 2021, I created a Color Guard after-school program at the STEM Academy. We worked together to create a show that combined acting, dance, and flagwork, and performed at a variety of events throughout the city. It was at that time that the band director at Lowell High School, Jared Logan, asked me to come and join and teach his Color Guard there as well. Students in the middle school have the opportunity to join the marching band, and three of my middle school students rose to that challenge, pushing themselves throughout the season to reach the level of the high school students. One of my eighth graders at the time, Savannah, who is here to speak tonight as well, was even ready to join the high school indoor winter guard team and competed with them the following spring. When she graduated eighth grade, she knew that her career plans would be best served by attending the technical school, but we found out that she could not continue her Color Guard career unless she was a high school student at Lowell High. She and her mother worked tirelessly, attempting to reach out to anyone that would be able to help her secure the permission needed to join our teams. Color Guard is her passion and has become a passion for a number of students in our district. As of last year, our middle school program has now been opened up to any middle school student within the entire city. We compete against groups from around New England who share our passion for this sport. We have been taking amazing steps to build a wonderful music program here in Lowell for our students through the Afternoon in the Arts program and the movement to add back in the middle school band programs. As a teacher myself, I love to see my students fall in love with what they are learning, and there are countless staff members reporting the positive changes in their students that they have seen through their participation in these programs. Music and performance can be a light in the dark for our students, and we can give that to them. It's beyond disheartening for us to see that spark and then see our students have to give up something they love only because their career path or their learning style might be better suited at a different school. There have been accounts of students from Greater Lowell Tech that were members of the Lowell High marching band in the past, and there is already a collaboration between the two schools with the After Dark program, as Mr. Lay mentioned earlier. It's the hope of our staff at the, in the band programs, that we can keep our kids that started with us in middle school throughout their entire high school careers, regardless of their choice of school, and maybe even be able to branch out someday to any student that's at Greater Lowell Tech that may be interested in the musical programs that we offer. We know that this might seem like a small thing that may not affect many students, but we truly hope to secure your support in this endeavor, because for them, it would mean the world. If you have any questions about our programs, please feel free to let me know, and I thank you for your time. In consideration.
Thank you.
Next.
Morgan Yost. Savannah Condo.
Hello, and good evening. I am Savannah Condo, a current student of Greater Lowell Technical High School, a school that does not have any form of band, color guard, or winter guard. As a middle schooler at the STEM Academy, I was one of the very first kids to join our school's color guard program. Upon joining, I immediately fell in love with the art of color guard and developed a deep passion. I went on to compete with my school in winter competitions, along with competing for Lowell High School band and winter guard as well. Around this time, my mental health got really bad, and I was diagnosed with depression. I was not doing very well, and nothing seemed to help except for color guard. When I'm doing guard, the world around me disappears, and I feel like everything is perfect. The bonds I have built in guard have lasted to this day, and my team has become my family. Now I've had an idea of what my future job and life would be like since I was young, so choosing to attend Greater Lowell was a no-brainer. It has exactly what I need to achieve the occupation I'm so determined to reach. Along with that, I have some anxiety, and the idea of going to a school as big as Lowell High and such a great number of students I knew would not allow me to strive. Little did I know, following what I wanted for my future would take me out of the Lowell High color guard team I have been so fond of. Hearing this news, my heart shattered. My biggest passion and one of the only things that could truly make me happy was ripped away from me. This hit me a little harder from the fact that Lowell High kids could come to Tech for the After Dark program, that I would not be able to continue the art that I had been doing for two years. I believe if I've already built this bond with the coaches and the team at Lowell High School, I should be able to continue working with them, along with anyone else in my situation. I understand expenses are difficult, which has a simple solution of having us pay a fee to participate. Color Guard is one of the few things that have saved my life, and I'm sure it's done the same for other students. This should not be taken from me or anyone else, because what's best for our future is a tech school. I hope you take life sentence into consideration. Thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I think the speaker said it all. I thank you for coming up tonight, and I do want to apologize that, my understanding, I did get a call from a Lowell parent, that this has been in the, we've, you've been making this request for over a year, maybe two years, and I'm sorry that it's taken this long to get it before the committee. I can speak for myself, but I know this committee does value the impact that extracurricular activities have on student engagement, whether it's art, music, dance, sports. These all play very important roles to helping a student feel connected in their school community. I am very much looking forward to a report that determines a path going forward that is sustainable. That's why in the motion, you'll notice, I say, if they have to be guardrails, if there has to be a fee, or if it has to be, transportation will be provided by the family, whatever is necessary, I think we should make the efforts to have this sort of flexibility for our students so that they can be part of this program. We don't, they don't have a color guard program at the Greater Lowell Educational School, so it's kind of like giving that opportunity that they've done for us with the After Dark program. Thank you.
All the favors say aye. Oppose. Motion passes. Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. Thank you. Six eleven by Ms. Doherty. Request superintendent provide the committee with a report that details the hiring of assistant principals, where screening committees were not a factor in the hiring decision from FY '23 through today. The reports should include an explanation of why hiring policy was not followed. Seconded by Mr. Conway, Ms. Doherty.
Thank you, Mayor. I don't think it's a secret. I've had concerns about hiring policies for the last several years. I think things really reached a tipping point with the last administration. When I first became aware of these two situations, it could possibly just be one-offs. So one situation that I became aware of is internal candidates for assistant principals. Some were being placed at schools. Others were being interviewed through screening committees to get hired. The second one was a hiring candidate who was not screened by the screening committee, who ultimately got the position. And as you all know, I'm part of the policy subcommittee. We've been looking at our policies, and we have had issues before with certain policies not being clear. However, this policy is very clear in our current policy handbook, or whatever you want to call it, that screening committees will be a factor. The hiring manager, the building principal, in the case of an assistant principal position, has the final say, but will factor in the recommendations of the screening committee. So the reason I'm asking for this as a formal report is I'm concerned that maybe it wasn't just these one-offs that need to be explained. Maybe it's happened more consistently. So I think that it is important that we value the role of our screening committees, and even as we move forward with the policy changes that we're recommending even tonight, we're always looking to have transparency, fairness, and equity in our hiring policies. That's very important for a good organization in order to make progress and be successful. So I appreciate my colleague's support on this motion. Thank you.
Mr. Conway?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just very quickly, I think this is a good motion. I think what's important is the, is consistency. And I think we all know the fact that anything that takes place in that school, it's up to the principal that makes the decision, just like anything that happens down at Central. You're the puppet master. You're the one that makes it, makes it happen. Simple as that. The fact is, the hiring process, I think that definitely the consistency is needed, because if in one middle school, there's three people on the, on the selection committee, and in another one, there's 10, right off the bat, there's a, whether, there is or not in reality, but there's a red flag that goes off. Why is there three, and there should be, and this one over here has 10? So whatever we do, there needs to be, in my humble opinion, there should be a consensus between, you know, how we hire. And the other thing, which is very important, and I've heard this now from a number of people that are on these selection committees, whether it's at the high school, or middle school, or elementary school, that, you know, they're there spending their time and volunteering their time, and all of a sudden, when they take that, they give that vote in, and you find out that, that the principal does not pay attention to that committee. Now, the committee says, members of the committee, why am I sitting here? What's the purpose? Is this a sham, or what? So I think it's, again, I think the importance, if, if we ask a committee to sit down and spend all sorts of time evaluating and asking questions, they should be, their opinion should be highly respected. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All the favors, Mr. Superintendent, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm trying to think about, I want to respond to this motion, obviously, verbally to some extent right now, or also just a formal report. I'm not 100% sure how much we can issue in a public report, in a public forum, versus possibly an executive session. So if we're identifying an individual school, which implicates an individual principal and so on, it's probably best that we do that in executive session. What I can say for now is this, that we must follow hiring policy each and every time, and that is what people are instructed to do in this district. And as always, in every single policy that you've got with, it's almost like talking about people staying within the speed limit on the highway, right? You know some people are going to violate that, right? We have to police the policy as well, and we have to listen when somebody says, we don't think that policy was followed. If that's the case, Ms. Doherty, there will be consequences for that, too. And it is, it is possible, in this case or in others, if we're made aware of it, there will be appropriate action taken to redress that situation. I think that's been the case this summer. I don't know if it's exactly what you're referring to here. If we want to talk about it in great detail and at further length, it might be helpful to do it in executive session. I don't think I can say much more in an open public forum, either like this or a written report.
Ms. Doherty?
Well, I'm open to a written report that doesn't specify the school or the position, then. If, if, my understanding is somebody who did not apply for the position, that did not go before the screening committee, was hired, right? You don't have to name the school. You don't have to name the person. I'd like an explanation, because that is completely against the policy, where the screening committee will be a factor in hiring decisions. And if I could just finish, I'm not so much concerned about consequences as being proactive, getting the word out very clearly, like perhaps in the past, under other administrations, policies were not followed to the T. People were making hires based on personal preference, or who they knew, or whatever issue.
I'll just caution that.
Okay.
Do, please.
That we're not doing that anymore. That would be more important to me.
Understood. So when I talked about consequences, Ms. Doherty, it's because we have been, in this administration, very, very clear about our intention to follow policy to a T. And then if it's after that, which that sort of caution has been issued, and people understand that's the expectation, if they then violate the policy, there needs to be a consequence. And I'm assuring you that that. a consequence, and I'm assuring you that that's been the case.
It would be helpful for the law to put into response as well, what the actual law is. All the favors say aye, opposed, motion passes.
I think so.
Yeah. Oh, I'm sorry, Slay, I apologize. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, the way I understand that, this is not HR, so this is completely the hiring manager.
That's correct.
So, my, I don't know, I know that school committee shouldn't involve too deep into the hiring process, but at the same time, when something like this happened, I don't know what the proper way is. Should they notify somebody? Should somebody, school committee, or somebody be notified?
Thank you. I think, Mr. Lay, the answer to your question is, I think you should call the superintendent, and I think you should hold the superintendent accountable to respond and give you a proper solution.
I want to just clarify, we are responsible to have our policies followed. We are responsible for that.
Okay. So, would that be, I don't know if we can make a decision today, but would that be something that school committee should be known if something like this happened?
No, Mr. Lay, and I'm not at liberty to share that with you. However, you can become aware of a situation from a community member or a school member, and at that point, I think you should contact the superintendent. And I do, and, you know, obviously, I'm the superintendent, but you should hold me accountable to give you a satisfactory response.
All the favors say...
Inquire, then, am I to respond to this individually? Or, I'm worried about putting something very general in a public response. If you want more detailed information, I'll be happy to follow up individually.
Great. Thank you, Superintendent. All the favors say aye, opposed, motion passes. Five, six thirteen, Mr. Bahu. Have the superintendent submit a report on how we make students aware of the dangerousness of guns and weapons that they may come across when not at school. Seconded by Ms. Doherty, Mr. Bahu.
Guns are a major problem in our country right now, in our state, in our city. They're a crisis. Two students of ours got killed this past year through the guns. I was reading a report in the Lowell Sun, and Jen Myers went ahead and spoke on it, and she indicated that we do use programs to make them age-appropriate for students to understand what guns can do. We have a second-step program for an elementary student, and then we have a Michigan model for our middle school students, and we offer it in Health One and Health Two. However, I don't know that our students are really grasping on to the dangers, because something happened along the way. Guns became cool, and I think they see them, and they sort of discount them. But unfortunately, when you see our students getting killed, and guns in the newspaper every day, then I don't know that we're sending the message as well and as loudly and as clearly as we can. And I don't know if we can start at the bottom up in Lowell, Massachusetts, and bring it all the way up to Washington, or if Washington needs to go ahead and bring it right back down to us. But I think if we have students being murdered in our city, and it's disheartening for every one of us, then there's something that we can teach these children to identify what an illegal gun may be, or to identify if a gun is not locked up in their parents' home, or if it's loaded, and maybe speak to a school resource officer. But there's got to be some guidelines that we can go ahead and give kids some knowledge so that they can begin to identify the dangerousness of what they're seeing in their homes or outside of school. So, I just ask the school committee to assist me with this and pass this motion so that we can begin to relay as much information as we can to our students.
All the favors say aye, opposed, motion passes. So, moving on to section seven, we have five subcommittees, actually, yeah, five of them, a report, Madam Clerk, on just two.
Excuse me, Mr. Superintendent, could we take one thing out of motion? I see that our football coach is here, and he's looking to travel, and it's probably going to be maybe another hour, and maybe even an hour and a half.
He has nowhere to go.
So, if you could allow him...
Oh, man, I was going to make him stay, Mr. Bahu, but such a...
Yeah, take this out of order. That'd be good.
Ten point two, conventionary conference requests, it's against my objection, Madam Clerk. Ten point two, overnight request Lowell High School football camp. Mr. Coach Boyle is here. Coach, you want to?
Good evening. Hi, I'm here to speak on behalf of holding our preseason camp up at Camp Winaki. It's in Malton Borough, New Hampshire, about eighty-two miles away, approximately a two-hour bus drive. My experience with football camp in high school, I was head coach at Lowell High School for ten years. We went away to football camp every year for ten years. The last six years, I went to Camp Winaki, the one I would like to attend again. It's an outstanding camp. It's located on Lake Winnipesaukee. The benefits of our kids going to camp is to put them in the best environment where they can thrive, not just physically, mentally, socially, building relationships, team building. You might think all our kids, they're really close on our team, and they are, but it's a big school, they're spread out throughout the year, and we all know now, like, the kids don't interact, maybe after school, it's more by phone. So, now at camp, you're sitting at lunch, you're eating lunch, breakfast, lunch, and dinner together. You're doing team activities, not just football, there's other activities up there for the kids to do. At night, we'll have a movie night, we'll do, I'll speak on recruiting for our older kids. There's many other things that will happen up there outside of football. So, I think the benefits of it are, I wouldn't take kids away unless I thought there were a lot more benefits, not just football. Our kids have many distractions, obstacles, adversity, in a week like that, where they don't have to worry about, how am I going to get to Colley Stadium? How am I going to get home? What would I eat at lunchtime? Do I have enough food for the day? Where they might be at Colley Stadium for eight hours, and not that we couldn't do that, but I think taking all that stress and those obstacles away would give them a better opportunity to thrive. And that's our goal, is to give our students the best opportunity. So, if there are any questions or concerns, I surely can answer them.
Any questions from anybody? No? Motion approved by Mr. Bahu, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Real quick, how are the boys looking this year?
We're doing really well. The kids are working hard, we have good numbers, and it's an exciting group. I anticipate us to be very competitive, and like always, if we execute and play well, I think we could win a lot of games. I tell our kids, it's about what we do, not the opponent, and it's a really good group of guys.
Awesome. Thank you, Coach. Madam Clerk, roll call. Yeah, we do it too, yeah, we do that ten point one as well, Lowell High School European trip.
Thank you.
Hold on, we haven't voted on it yet. We haven't approved it yet. Is there anybody here on the European trip? No? A motion to approve that as well by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Mr. Lay. Madam Clerk, we'll call them both.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Rock?
Yes.
Seven yes, approved.
Thanks, Coach. I take it.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Could I take eight, a motion to take eight-two out of order, please?
Eight-two, motion response by organizational chart.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Looking at the organizational chart, and I take a look under academics and instruction, there's the teacher academy. I'd like to make a motion that that teacher academy goes over to HR and operations.
Mr. Superintendent?
Is there a second? Madam Doherty, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, school committee members. The teacher academy was placed where it is at the moment, based on a recommendation from the group that we had to study, you may recall, they were called Public Works. They were quite surprised that the teacher academy existed where it existed, and they asked us to, they suggested strongly in their report that the teacher academy belonged under curriculum. And that's partly why it exists there. The other reason it exists there is we've been urged by the school committee to balance the duties of each of the individual assistant superintendents. Nonetheless, I am open to, I've always said that we'll follow the will of the school committee, and so the school committee wishes to discuss it, and insists on it being somewhere else, I'd be happy to comply with that.
Ms. Doherty?
I just, there's actually this one and one more I have a question about. So, the teacher academy, so at, in my experience from working in Lowell public schools, you fill out all your paperwork with human resources when you're hired, and it's a gateway into the teacher academy, and then all the information is given to the teacher academy, and that's how it all happens. And in a system as big as Lowell, it's easy to get lost. And if it stays under HR, it continues to be more of a smoother gateway, I believe.
So, can I just, I take the point, everything that employees do in the school department initiates with their being hired at HR. So, you could say the same thing about, once a person is processed by HR, they're given a laptop and an email account, and so on and so forth, but that doesn't mean we should have technology be under HR. When employees are hired, they're also then eligible for some of the curriculum professional development that we do, but we don't put curriculum professional development under HR. HR is the place where people enter. It doesn't mean that these other areas need to belong there. And so, but I think it's worth the discussion about the rationale for where we place it. So, I'd be happy to entertain any rationale for where you think it belongs.
Go ahead.
I know Pina is here. She does the teacher academy. If you'd like some more clarification, if I can make a motion for her to speak about it, and why it would be beneficial to be under HR, I'm sure she can have more details.
I thank you very much for the, you know, opportunity to speak. Mickey and I just got off a plane, we were in Houston, Texas, with the AFT convention, and to say that we're exhausted is an understatement. This is indeed a very critical decision to make, and I do want to preface it by saying that what is very important and has been missing is the opportunity for myself and Paul, because really, the Lowell Teacher Academy was really the dream child of Paul. But we have not been part of any discussion that puts this wherever, it's under curriculum or academic, wherever it might be, and that was very disheartening, because the Lowell Teacher Academy, and I'm not going to take a lot of time, has evolved. It is, in my opinion, because of what we've done, and briefly, we have grants, working with Fitchburg State College, the collaborative educational services. We have, we have, there's at least ten individuals who have gone through a grant given to us by DESI for paraprofessionals and residents of Lowell to follow a plan of study to become ESL teachers. We have worked with, and Liam has supported at one hundred percent, the pathway to professional development. Again, we have paraprofessionals, clerks, custodians, all those who have no degree and aspire to earn a degree and perhaps ultimately be part of the faculty. We have a contract with Middlesex Community College, where, and now we have, I think, at least ten people who are in the first cohort. We're negotiating with Fitchburg State College to have the credits from the associate's degree rolled into a bachelor's program, and in turn, those individuals may become teachers. As you noted, the, we have all our new hires, a huge proportion of whom, of which have now working under an emergency license. They have no idea, it's complicated, they don't know how to navigate the DESI site, and we are working with Fatima with the CLSP. We have contacted every individual who's working under an emergency license, we've met with them, I'm working with the MLL, Amy and her crew. We created workshops for them, because many of them, because of the language, or whatever it might be, are not able to pass the test, and yet they've gone through the program. So, we just finished, I think it was like a five-week, Latifah, you are aware of the program, and I thank you for your cooperation and being able to offer that. And now, these individuals are going to be taking the MTL, and we want to see, did those, the workshops that we offer, were they helpful, and whether they helped them to pass the test? There are some, we have cultural committee, we're offering cultural courses through an AFT grant. I just could go on and on, but the point is, we, I'd like to think of the Lowell, and this is all since 2016, when I became director. I like to think of the Lowell Teacher Academy as, you know, you have an all, what is it, all-purpose resort. We are a resort, all-purpose for all new teachers and veteran teachers. We now have, I know at some point, they wanted to hire an individual to work on the licensure. I don't know how many individuals Jim and I have managed to put through, at least we're doing three or four a week, they come to me, I go through all the paperwork that they need, and Jim goes through it, and then Liam, you sign them. This is a, we're now involved in licenses, right? Fatima and I are offering on a monthly basis, a clinic for licenses for people who want to renew a license, want to extend a license, or don't even know, you know, where to begin. We offer so, and the opportunity for what we can do, to me, is endless, right? I mean, this has just grown. There is a need, and we fill it, right? And so, that, and I agree, I think that where this organization belongs is all HR. It's about, it isn't professional development per se, it is professional growth, right? There are clerks at Central Office that are interested in earning, you know, an associate's degree. We have custodians. We have a custodian who is now taking part in the associate's program. So, these are very important details, and the other thing, you know, to be very honest, how many people here really know what the Lowell Teacher Academy does? We have individuals who have just started, and we have, you know, we have new people on the school committee, and I am more than happy to meet you weekends, nights, whatever it is, and sit down and explain to you, because this is a very unique organization. I don't believe there's another school system in Massachusetts that has a teacher academy, and it is, it is run by a teacher, right? The director, I'm a unit A, right? And it is for teachers, and what is wonderful, we are embracing, we are embracing, we have a CAGS program. For years, the teachers, everyone, almost everyone has a master's, now they want to do a, you know, a CAGS. We are, and we just graduated our first cohort, right? And now, we have, we're working on our fourth. And who are the instructors? Jim Hall is an instructor, right? Jamie Moody is an instructor. Now, we are embracing all our, we are embracing our administrators, right? It isn't just the teachers, I forgot to tell you, teachers are the ones, they become adjunct professors at Fitchburg, and they're teaching the course. Two hundred ninety-five dollars for a three-credit graduate course is what we're offering, and we offer the reimbursement. You know, this is a jewel, and it's not me, it's not Pina Maggio, it's the Lowell Teacher Academy, it's people like Latifah who support us, and Liam who support us. We are, we're a human resource, and what we can do, I just, I just cannot imagine, to me, the possibilities are endless, and they'll extend far beyond my tenure, and those of you who know me, you know that I'm eighty-one years old. I'm not climbing the ladder, and I'm not going anywhere, by the way, but I do want to make sure that we're in a place, the organization is in a place, that's going to our... going to allow it to flourish and grow and meet the needs of everyone, not just teachers or clerks, but everyone in the system. And that, you know, it's, I am so proud to be part of the Lowell Public School System and I am even prouder to be the director and I'm humbled by it because it has been successful not because of Pina Maggio, but because of the mentors and because of all the individuals who support it in one way or another, no matter how big or how small. And I thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm really exhausted, but, and I hope that you will make a decision to allow this organization to grow and the place for it to grow and I have to, I, you know, 100%, I support that it remain with HR. Thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Rossi?
I'll say.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to move the Teacher Academy over to HR and Operations.
Motion, right? Again, right.
Mr. Doherty?
Thank you. I guess I'm a little concerned because I know it was this body that said, we don't have the authority to move departments and change job descriptions. And I believe that we, this was the same body that did not vote a majority to get a legal opinion on that in writing since we have been doing that in practice through multiple administrations. So I'm concerned that we would make a motion on the floor to change this org chart that we have, and I do have questions about some of these, how you've laid these out Superintendent Skinner, but that we would have that ability to make that motion when I thought that last time we did that, that had to be reconsidered because we don't have the legal authority. And I believe it was Mr. Conway who said that just because we did it in the past didn't mean it was right or legal. So I have some concerns about making moves without having, giving Mr. Skinner the opportunity to discuss those people whose jobs it impacts. And then while I have the mic, I would also like to ask the thinking behind separating safety from facilities because isn't safety about the safety of our buildings, isn't that a large component of safety?
Superintendent?
Thank you. I want to, I want to take advantage of Ms. Doherty's acknowledgement that the school committee can't move these departments around, right? So can I just get on with this then, right? I hope, I'm amenable to the suggestions that are being made tonight, but I'd like to request that we continue this discussion and we complete what we can agree on so that we can go back to Central Office and start organizing these departments, talking about where they're going to live, who's going to be in what office and all the rest of it. There's a lot of things that are going to have to happen once this is approved, but so I'm hoping we can get there. Let me just deal with the two that are on the table so far. Pina Maggio does wonderful work, the Teacher Academy is a jewel for our school system. It's also at low maintenance and so I think it's okay that it remain under HR and Operations, right? I'm not sure about the rationale, but there's another reason why I'm not concerned about the rationale and I'll explain that when we're talking about safety. So if it meets the committee's, even if you don't have the authority to move things around, I want to consider the committee's point of view and I'm trying to work with the committee. If the consensus is that the Teacher Academy belongs in HR and Operations, that's where it will be. Let me say that. The second part about what, like, is that there are many of these blocks on the chart, many of the departments that live in these offices that can be, you know, it sounds too trivial to say mix and match, right? But they're relatively independent and if Central Office works as it is going to work, it won't matter a lot that one person, in this case, the Safety Coordinator, works under Ms. Crocker or works under Dr. Hall. There should be collaboration right across Central Office. They're not individual silos, they have to work together. So in the case of safety, Ms. Doherty, same two rationale. And the first being, the committee asked us to go back and try to equalize the amount of responsibility that individuals, assistant superintendents have. So that's why some things had to move. But then every time we move things and we get questioned on why are you moving them there? In the case of the Safety Officer, what is most important, I think you've said and I know Mr. Conway has said, is safety where? Safety in our schools, right? And so Ms. Crocker is intimately involved in working with schools on a day-to-day basis and I think is in a great place to liaise with the, and to supervise the role of the Safety Officer. So that's why that moved there.
Any other questions?
Thank you. If we take a quick glance at academic and instruction, you know, Teachers Academy, yeah, it may look like it fits in there, but the more you look at it, academic and instruction is for students and the Teachers Academy are not for students, they're more like for staff.
For teachers.
So, for teachers, right. So they're not, they're not really for students, therefore moving it to HR, I have no problem. I would support moving to HR. Thank you.
Can I ask, please, to promote the discussion that we're having, if the committee members have any other suggestions that we hear them so that we can finalize this chart? Or can we agree, in other words, if there are no further suggestions, might we agree that this will be the final chart once Teacher Academy is put back under finance, excuse me, HR and Operations?
Can I just ask one?
Sure.
Last question. All right, and the only other thing, and I think you explained it when you were saying they should be working collaboratively, is about the six specialty schools under the school leadership. When I think about the Laurel Lee and the Le Blank and the 80-day school, I almost feel like they should be under Student Support Services, but Special Ed is already there, so will they be working together?
Thank you very much, absolutely. And that's exactly the idea. There will be, so we consider Ms. Crocker and Ms. Fox Roy to be together what we call the Office of Teaching and Learning. It's one office, there are two assistant superintendents in that, in playing their roles in there and they will be collaborative.
Okay, thank you.
Great, so we're all in agreement on the organizational chart?
Yes, Ms. Doherty.
I don't know if Ms. Martin wants to speak, Ms. Martin wanted to know where technology falls.
I'm happy to ask that question. Where does technology fall? Trying to keep things quick.
I, yeah, obviously I don't see that wording, I'm trying to see what is in there in place of it. And if you don't mind.
Your office?
Oh, excuse me. It's at the bottom, it's somewhere in the middle, it's at the bottom under Title I in a gray box and it's there because...
They're going to be reporting up, that's, I'm reading that right, they're going to report to two in two different directions.
It reports to two different, yes, it does. Is that, is that your question, Ms. Martin?
Yes. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so that change made by Superintendent, we're okay to approve the organizational chart?
Can I ask one quick question?
Delay.
So, information, technology and communication, they're separated and separate, they're not related according to...
So, Ms., somebody already referred this evening to Ms. Jen Myers, says a communications person who puts out news articles, so that's just meant by communication, technologies, yeah, computers and so forth. Yeah, thank you.
Great, all right. Back to the agenda. You're all in favor, say aye, opposed, motion passes. Is it section seven, Madam Clerk, Karan?
Subcommittee for the...
Yeah, so which ones we have to, just do a quick...
We're going to bundle and approve HR, seven one, seven two, seven four.
Motion to approve seven one, seven two, seven four by Mr. Rossi, seconded by Mr. Conway. Seven one, approval of the minutes of the HR Labor Relations Subcommittee Meeting, June 10th. Seven two, approval of the minutes of the HR Labor Relations Subcommittee, June 24th. And seven four, approval of the minutes of the HR Labor Relations Subcommittee, June 27th, 2024. Motion is already made and seconded for the report of progress. All's in favor, say aye. Motion approved, back to seven three. Seven three, seven three, right? Seven three. That's right, yeah. Okay, seven three and seven five, we can do together, approval of the minutes of the Policy and Governance Subcommittee Meeting on June 17th. And seven five, approval of the minutes of the Policy and Governance Subcommittee Meeting on July 16th, 2024. There you go, yeah. By Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Martin, Ms. Doherty?
I don't need to report on the policy in Subcommittee, just to tell you, we met with MASCE. We already had a vote tonight to go into a contract with them about our policies and later in the agenda, we will be voting on some of the policies we've already discussed with their recommended changes. Thank you.
Motion to, as a report of progress by Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. Conway, all's in favor, say aye. Approved. H, report, the Superintendent reports, eight point one, Superintendent evaluation. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. School committee members, what's in your packet under eight point one is an attempt to facilitate my own evaluation. So you have in there the memo as well as a, the document that MASCE, where they advise school committees on evaluation of superintendent. It's simply an attempt to prompt you to begin that process because I think it's timely and it's an important one. I also in the memo indicate to you that a next step would be that I can provide you what you need to then begin the process more formally.
Any other questions? No, okay. Eight two, we're taking care of, eight three, KPI report, Q four, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The KPI report for quarter four, the last quarter of last school year is in your packet and we'll be happy to take any questions you have.
All right, set, great. Yeah, motion to accept the reports of the Superintendent, eight point one through eight point three, as reports of progress by Mr. Rossi, seconded by Mr. Lay, all's in favor, say aye. Approved. Now, new business, nine point one, vote to accept donation from the Frederick Webber Foundation. The motion to accept donation by Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. Rossi, roll call.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Ruck?
Yes.
Seven years.
Nine point two, vote to accept donation from Project Learn, the motion to accept the donation from Project Learn by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Martin, roll call.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Ruck?
Yes.
Seven years, approved.
Nine point three, request approval of doctoral research proposal. The motion to approve the research proposal by Mr. Lay, seconded by Mr. Bahu, roll call.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Ruck?
Yes.
Seven years.
Nine four, approval of the job description and permission to post Deputy Chief Financial Officer. The motion to approve by Mr. Rossi, seconded by Mr. Lay. Questions? Ms. Doherty?
My question through you to the Superintendent, why are we looking to fund this number two position when we haven't hired the number one position?
Thank you, Ms. Doherty. In large part because we're, we've not found that number one position and we need to provide for some leadership in that department. So at the moment and for a considerable period of time, we've not had, you know, a Chief Financial Officer, nor a Deputy Chief Financial Officer. We are confident we can fill this role and we think we'd be wise to go ahead and do so. We can even fill this role with the potential savings if we hire someone within and who would be suitable for that role. It's just a prudent step. We need to provide some leadership in that department. This is a role that existed before, that we might have filled in the past, we chose not to do so because we didn't anticipate needing it. Now we, and we didn't put it in the budget for that reason. Now we realize we really do need it and we'd like to add it back to our budget and fill that position.
So you think you could fill this number two position easier than the top one? You have an internal candidate who would be qualified for this?
Correct.
Mr. Bahu?
Are you still looking to fill the role of a Chief Financial Officer after we have a Deputy Officer?
Yes, so thank you for the question. And just for clarity, right, we're calling that role a, an Assistant Superintendent for Finance, right? So yet, the answer to the question is yes, we're continuing to seek an Assistant Superintendent for Finance. It's not hopeful, given the situation we're in, that we'll be able to fill that satisfactorily, but we can continue to do that, to work on that until certain time it's filled. In the meantime, if the Deputy CFO position is posted and is filled satisfactorily, we can find additional savings at Central Office, including the elimination of another position to at least partially balance the books. Does that make sense?
Well, it makes sense, but why do we want to add on an extra $100,000 position, right?
So, okay, one of the, one of the details, again, I'm trying to be diplomatic here, but there are a couple of individuals at Central Office, if you could picture it, the amount of work that goes on in the Finance Department at any moment in time, there's a lot going on. There's payroll, there's purchasing, there's all sorts. All of that, I'm happy to tell you this, all of that has been continuing. We have closed out, or are closing out, believe it or not, FY '24 in a much more satisfactory manner than we have for years. It's on the back of some really talented staff who are beneath the CFO position. And some of those folks are, they're doing the work anyway, right? And, but they, they need to be given the responsibility that befits the work that they're doing. And that's part of what we're attempting to do here, to correct and to provide for adequate staffing. If, in addition to what's before you, if the Assistant Superintendent for Finance position goes on to, is unfilled, we need to provide additional support. We need to contract with somebody to provide that role. So this is not the end. This is one step in trying to provide, you know, adequate support for the Finance Office. We need to make some steps. We can't continue to say, we're working on it, we're working on it, we're looking, hoping to find somebody. I think I told you the last time, I forget the number, but something like 75 or 85 districts in Massachusetts were looking for a CFO position. There's too many people looking and they don't exist, the candidates don't exist. So this is not the answer, but it's one measure that will provide us with some security.
Mr. Lay?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So there are certain responsibilities that Billy Joe has been gone for quite a while. So I know that we still have work, her works still, I mean, the work that she's supposed to do still continue. So who has been doing those things and, and certain, don't, certain things that you need a CFO to do? And so who do all of that, those works?
So I'll try to give you a brief response. Could you believe it?
And also, if this person is going to be able to do all of them.
I have considered, seriously considered, having one of our spotlights on excellence be devoted to an answer to that question because the committee, not through, not through any fault of the committee, you're unaware of how we've managed. But the answer to your question, Mr. Lay, is basically a committee of people have contributed to responding to the need and have done yeoman's work. They've been terrific. I'd love to have the opportunity to give you all the details, but where it comes down to it and you need a qualified signature or somebody to vet the work, either I have done it or Dr. Hall has done it, or sometimes Ms. Crocker has done it. And so we, sometimes people have worked on weekends to put these things together and we've learned a lot from the process and we have made sure that everything is accounted for as it should be. And there are yet challenges. I'm not suggesting this is, you know, so you don't worry about it, we're all set. You should worry about it, we worry about it every day. Again, but to answer your question, many people, I, I'll consider naming them for you in the future, but they are, we have a tech person, we have some of the Finance Office people, we have some new hires who have just jumped on board and been phenomenal. We have a school principal who has been coming down during the summer to work with us on a daily basis, who has a school business administrator license. And so it's been a committee of people, is the answer.
So, second, the latter part of my question was... This, sorry, thank you. So the second part of my question was, if we hire this person, would that person be able to do all the works that we just mentioned?
To some extent.
Signing off and...
Some of the work, not, not all of it, Mr. Lay. Some of it, we still need to, we'd still need to seek Dr. Hall as an example, who is qualified and certified and able to be responsible. It's an... It's an encumbrance for him, but he tends to be, to do what's necessary at Central Office, so we'd still need to impose on him, for instance. I might need to lead that group and hold their weekly meetings with them. I've considered that for this coming school year, as long as is necessary. This will not solve our problems. I think it's one prudent step that we should take right now to help us get there.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Excuse me.
Ms. Conway.
Yeah, thank you. Through you to the Superintendent. If you take a look at the qualifications, the first one, obviously, when you're setting up a job description, the most important is going to be in that, in that top there. BS or BA, degree in finance, business administration, public management or related field. I did a little bit of research on this, and let me just, let me just highlight some of the things. Job description for a Deputy CFO in Buffalo City School District. Accounting, creative financial statements and reports. Clark County School District, right off the top, a CPA, Certified Public Accountant. Winston-Salem, North Carolina. We go on and on and on. There's a theme here going through. The first and most important thing is accounting. And many times, they ask for a master's in accounting. And on this particular, on this particular job posting, I don't see, I know you're going to say related field, but the fact is, I would like to see somebody with accounting background. I mean, if we're going to put them into this situation, I mean, this is one of the problems that we've had, we should have somebody with an accounting background. I don't understand why we don't have that as a top priority in that job description.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. So, this is a case where a job description existed already. We had this, this was a position that was filled last year, so I don't know that there, this is a position that the committee, in other words, approved in the past. We could go back and revise the job description. I'm hoping we avoid that, because we need to make some changes, we need to provide some support.
No, but we need the right person there with that accounting background.
I am only putting this forward tonight because I'm very confident we have a very suitable candidate who will be...
That has a degree in accounting.
I've not looked up their resume, Mr. Conway, but I'm confident of it.
So you've already, you've already picked the person then?
I'm going to, we're going to post this position.
I see.
And we're going to do as we do with every position. We're going to hire the best candidate we can find.
Roll call.
One question.
Mr. Bahu?
This is, this is only a 12-month position, is that correct? What would we be doing a year from now? Because advertisers are 12-month positions.
No, it's a year from now.
It would be a permanent position. 12-month position means it's a year round, it's not someone who follows the school schedule.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
No.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Ruck?
Yes.
Six yeas, one nay.
9.5, approval to accept or expend allocated FY '25 awards. The motion to approve and accept allocated FY '24 awards by Mr. Bahu, seconded by Ms. Doherty. Any questions? Roll call.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mia Ruck?
Yes.
9-6, approval of 2024, 2025 Elementary, Middle School Student Handbook. The motion to approve by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Lay. Questions? Roll call.
I have a question.
Mr. Bahu?
Three months ago, I brought up a motion about Chromebooks. We spend $1.5 million on Chromebooks, computers, and networks annually. We have 22, over 2,000 Chromebooks in our IT office regularly that are rotating through in our... Need fix, students unfortunately are bringing them back to their libraries. Sometimes they break them, sometimes they drop them, but they're still not taken care of. There's 2,200 in our IT office regularly. We're spending $1.5 million on them annually, but we don't have a policy to address if these students can even take them home. I understand they need to take them home for homework at times, but if we have repeat offenders, and they're costing us $400, $450 a piece, and we have 2,200 in our IT office throughout the school year, to me, that equates to $800,000, $900,000. And I don't see a policy in our parent's student handbook addressing Chromebooks. So, this, to me, is not complete.
Thank you, Mr. Bahu. If I may, the damage to Chromebooks, or abuse of Chromebooks, would be considered a damage to property, it's school department property. And so, we do have the protection of policy regarding, and you know, potentially laws as well against, you know, your, I don't have the law in front of me, and I don't want to refer to Dr. Hall at this point, but there's a law, again, there are laws against damaging property, public property, and so that, Chromebooks are covered under that. If I may, I think the point that Mr. Bahu is making is a very serious one, and we've already begun to examine it more closely. In other words, significant Chromebook issues are not occurring in every school, and so we're isolating where the problems exist and dealing with it on a school-by-school basis. We can include something in the policy if the committee wishes, but I'm also suggesting that we can, we need to work on the problem regardless of whether it's specifically in the book or not.
The students are breaking two degrees, and they're still allowed to take them home. I don't understand whether we say it's out of property, and we're damaging the property, they're not being arrested, they're not having intention. There is nothing indicated that says that they have to be held accountable. They snapped them in front of the teachers. They have total disregard for our property, and we are still handing them a new Chromebook and saying, "Go on your way."
Mr. Bahu? Don't do that again.
So, can I suggest, I think I want to take Mr. Bahu's concern seriously and respond appropriately. I think it's a bigger issue than we can deal with tonight, simply because we're not entitled to deny students services that other students have. That's a problem, right? So, to get around that, let's say we want to be equitable about this, we might have to have a policy that says, students cannot bring Chromebooks home. I don't know that we could have a policy that says, students can bring their Chromebooks home until they damage it, after which they're no longer allowed to bring their Chromebooks home. That would be inequitable. We have to provide student services, we have to provide student resources, we're obligated to do that. I think the response to it should be through coaching and disciplinary work in schools. Again, this problem is not happening generally in our schools. There might be one or two exceptional cases where that's happening, and we need to deal with that, more so about the Chromebook and about the student behaviors. There's no student that will break a Chromebook in front of a teacher and not have that be appropriately addressed. So I think we need to address, is what I'm saying, whether we do it in the policy handbook or not, I don't know.
Ms. Phillips?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, school committee members. So, after we publicly posted the handbook, we received some feedback and would like to propose a modification for the school committee's consideration. I did share it with you, it's in red here, and basically, it's just a notification for families relative to mental health screenings, and it's just informing families that we conduct mental health screenings, they have the option of opting out, and that the schools will contact families if a screening is scheduled to take place. So, there was a request to just include this information in the handbook so that parents were more aware that mental health screenings are taking place. So it would be under the parental notification relative to mental health screenings, it's just information, and would be included under J-5. So if you'd like to consider it this evening, we can also consider it at a later time, but it was a request that came after it was posted.
Is this for both the middle school and the high school handbooks?
Yes.
Okay.
Any else, story, all set?
Oh, actually, on the issue that Mr. Bahu brought up with the Chromebooks, I'm wondering if a progressive discipline approach, because you could have an accident and break your Chromebook one time, or lose it, but if it's a second and third, like, if we had tiered interventions for students that are having multiple issues with the Chromebooks.
Understood. I want to also add to the response we've given so far. It's, the school committee can make policy at any time. Just because you're approving the handbook doesn't mean we can't introduce a new policy next month, right? We talked about how we'd communicate at that time. If I may say so as well, Mr. Bahu brings up an issue that has been brought up before, and maybe it's time for me to come forward with a more thorough report on the issue, on where it's occurring, and what we're doing to address it. If this meets the committee's approval, I'd be happy to provide such a report.
Mr. Bahu, you want to file that motion now? Save time?
Yes, I actually filed that motion three months ago. Yes, I'll be happy to go ahead and file it again.
Right, Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. Conway. Mr. Conway, go ahead.
Yeah, just quickly, again, I think that goes back to, it goes back to the fact of having a set of eyes, as from the city solicitor's office, to take a look at, you know, take a look at the student handbook. Because again, you could be putting something in there and violating a law, I have no idea. But, I mean, I think that my colleague makes a good point, that there has to be something, there has to be something in there.
Chromebook policy.
Because I've talked to people, and they've said, these kids break these things all the time. Amazing. I mean, I've been in the back of that, and I've seen the big crates filled with them. So, it certainly is something that needs to be addressed. It's costing a lot of money from the taxpayers, it's taking money out of our budget, and it certainly needs to be addressed.
All right, so we have a first, before we get to the approval, we have a motion by Mr. Bahu, seconded by Mr. Conway, for a Chromebook policy, is that correct?
Yes, correct.
All's in favor, say aye. Proposed motion passes. Back to 9.6. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Present.
Mia Ruck?
Yes.
Seven yeas.
9-7, approval of 2024, 2025 Low High School Student Handbook. Motion to approve by Mr. Lay, seconded by Ms. Del Rossi. Roll call. Yes. Ms. Phillips, sorry.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, school committee members. So after the handbook was publicly posted, there was feedback that came from the community regarding the cell phone policy and the restroom policy. The high school team is proposing three-sentence changes, which I can share for you. I can read it to see if it would be amenable to the committee. So, under cellphone policy, and I shared this at your table, on page 28 of the high school handbook, they wanted to include a purpose sentence. So the purpose sentence reads, "The purpose of this policy is to limit the interruption and distraction to classroom learning. Compliance with this policy requires students to exhibit our core values within rider, responsibility, integrity, determination, engagement, and respect by placing their cellphone, in the cellphone box at the start of class." So that was a recommendation, just to clarify the purpose. Also on page 28, under collection of phones, they would like to strike the sentence that I shared with you. The sentence is, on the document I shared with you, the sentence is, "If a student states that they do not have a phone for three consecutive days, the school will contact the parent or guardian to confirm." They would like to strike that from the handbook. And then the last part on the restroom policy for page 33, again, they would like to include the rationale for why they're recommending this, which is, "Limiting one person per bathroom stall in high schools ensures privacy and promotes a safer and more comfortable environment for all students." So they're not major substantive changes, but it's clarifying the purpose, and then striking, striking one sentence, which they reconsidered after receiving some feedback.
Can I make a motion to accept those changes?
By Mr. Rossi, seconded by... Can I get your second first?
Sure, I second.
Right, Mr. Bahu, Mr. Lay, go ahead.
My question is, don't we have a motion by Mr. Conway earlier regarding to cellphone policy? Would this be...
I thought you were saying the same thing, I think it's different, he wants a more thorough report on everything.
I know, it's more...
Yeah.
And then wouldn't we, I guess, modify or change the cellphone phone policy according to that then?
If need be. Okay. Roll call, oh, sorry, on the first motion, the acceptance changes by, proposed by Ms. Phillips, all's in favor, say aye. Proposed motion passes. And a roll call on the acceptance of the handbook.
Mr. Bahu?
Yes.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Mr. Rossi?
Yes.
Ms. Doherty?
Yes.
Mr. Lay?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Present.
Mia Ruck?
Yes.
Five yeas, one absent, one present.
All right, so, yeah, motion to do 9.8 through 9.11, they're all first readings, to bundle